Call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. Roll call. Gesmi.
Here.
Groot.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Ronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery. Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you get the thing? I would take a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion from Derek. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Diane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Public input. We do not have anybody signed up for tonight, so I'm just going to skip the reading of our public input information. That gets us to number six, public hearing. Introduction and first reading of ordinance 391, an ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota authorizing the sale of parcel number 52.420.0160. Neil, if you'd like to take this one?
Sure. Casey Underdahl approached the city a while back and asked, okay, I'm going to back up just a little bit. The land that we received from Sempra had many, many parcels. And Casey understood that we ended up with the property back, I don't know, what was it, six months ago or so? And his house actually backs up to that property. His rear lot line is five feet from his house. He would like to purchase the lot that is directly behind him. The lot is very unbuildable. The terrain is terrible. So I took it to finance. They agreed to negotiate a price. We came up, the market value on that lot was $9,700. The mutually agreed upon price was $10,000. And what we will do at the end of the day is combine the lots administratively, so he'll have a nice, larger rear yard. And actually, then you'll have enough land to put a shed up or a little accessory building or something, so.
Just so the public knows, this is, this lot is on the backyard of the last house that's up on Main Street, right when you get to the base of Lime Kiln Hill to go up there. It's the last house there, and it's just a little bit of space back behind the home.
Yeah, it's down in that swale.
Yep. With that, we can open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for public hearing? Public hearing, take two. Public hearing, take three. Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing. With that, I would take a motion to approve, or there's need to be action tonight, or there will be, yep, there's a motion and a second to approve the sale of that parcel.
So moved.
Motion from Gesmi.
I'll second it.
Second from Jepson. Any further discussion?
Just that, we discussed this, I think you mentioned it, at the finance committee, and nothing can happen to that lot because it's going to be, I think you said that too, that it's going to be combined into that single lots.
After the sale, right?
Further discussion from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carries. That leads us to our presentation, the 2022 annual EDA and planning presentation from Laura Qualley and Diane Howard.
Oh, do we have to toggle it?
I got you. Podium HDMI?
Yep.
There you are. Oop. The gentleman in the, there we go. Perfect.
Okay.
All right, good evening. That seems really loud. Good evening, council and mayor, and staff as well. Every year, the EDA is to put together an annual report of activity that's happened within our department. And then also, because we work so closely with planning and zoning, Diane and I combined, have combined this over the last few years. So I'll go, I'll whip through a few of these things. I can ask first, before I start, I'm hoping all of you read it. I did include like the actual report, and then I did the presentations. You could kind of have more of the background that supports the more visually appealing presentation. But I'll just ask first, do you have any questions about anything that you read that you want me to spend some more time focusing on? Otherwise, I'll just kind of, like I said, breeze through the highlights. Any? Nothing? It was that good of a report, huh? Good. Glad to hear it. Okay, so we'll get started here. Our EDA board members for '22 was Luke Corman, Amy Donbeck, John Dahl, Matt Montgomery, and Mayor John Eltop at the time. And then Neil Jensen, Diane Howard, and myself are the non-voting members that participate in it. I won't go into that. As far as grants go, we did apply for the Goodyear County Broadband Partnership Program, and we did receive $50,000 from the county, and that was in order to refurbish the, or we refurbished the water tower last year with our ARPA funds, but then the $50,000 actually went toward adding an additional ring to increase the amount of communication equipment. So we can, you know, if there are other providers, service providers or whatnot, Goodyear County, they do have their emergency equipment up there as well. So that's why they felt compelled to kind of chip in and help support that. And then we, I did reach out to the different townships at the time, so that would be some new information to you, new council members. I did ask the different townships because with us expanding the ring and adding communication equipment, it would be, have a farther reach to our, to our neighboring townships. So based, the township was the only one that chose to contribute toward the project, so they did chip in five grand. And that was out of their ARPA funds. The Wisconsin Public Service Foundation, we would know it more as Minnesota Energy Resource. They had a community and neighborhood development grant. I found out from a Public Works and Parks Department that they were wanting to add an ADA lift chair, that that was kind of on their docket for last summer with the pool. So I reached out to my contact, and they awarded us $3,250 in order to purchase that, that lift chair, which is really nice because we didn't, we've never had one here. They do have one out at the hotel, but this one, I know that it's only, you know, during the nice summer months, but it does offer, you know, a whole nother demographic, whether it's people that have mobility issues, or maybe they're doing aquatic therapy, whatever it might be. So it was a really nice addition. And then our public work staff were the ones that installed that. The other thing, so I'm not going to take credit for this, but I will, as far as our CETA organization, the Cannon River Winery did reach out to CETA early last year and apply, and they hired CETA to do their grant writing for USDA value-added producer grant. And it's a 50-50 match, so they had to put in $250,000 if they were awarded, and they did receive that. So that, we actually just had Senator Klobuchar and Colleen Landkammer from the USDA. She's a federal-appointed USDA rep, and they both came last Monday and did a tour and a tasting, and we had a really nice conversation. It was probably, they were probably onsite for about an hour or so, but really a nice, a nice opportunity for Cannon Falls and for the winery itself. And they talked about how they've used that, those funds, because they were awarded those funds last September, October. So, and then grants that are pending would be the John Birch Park retaining wall that's on the bonding bill. Matt?
Just to update, it's $565,000 adjusted to inflation.
Correct.
And for those who are paying attention at home, it has passed the House. It's on the list to be passed in the governor's office. We're just waiting on the Senate. It was heard, and it failed to reach the three-fifths majority that it needed, so it has been tabled. It's still alive in the session, but it is stalled for the time being, just to...
I appreciate the update. Thank you. And then the other one is not necessarily EDA-related, but we did also find out from our Emerald Ash Board just yesterday that we did not receive the grant for $50,000, so it's kind of a big bummer, but we will proceed, and I'll try again for next year. Business activity, these are things that happen just around town and also in our industrial park. So the Keller Bartman property, they did purchase the truck stop lot last, last year, and then they broke ground in July for the 79-unit market rate apartment complex. I just talked to Andy Bartman yesterday, the developer, and they are on track to still be open in November. So if you haven't driven by there, they are starting on that fourth and final floor, so it is pretty exciting. Rob Bistro did sign an option to purchase the lot that the EDA owns in between Sweet Harvest and Lawrence Meats. So they want to expand, which is great news. They've been in business for 10 years, and they are looking to increase their production. So where, they're working on some plans, and we'll see if that comes to fruition, but that would be really exciting for Rob Bistro. Carsonson Leasing, they are, so Carsonson Trucking that is out in the industrial park, they are wanting to expand and build a separate building for their Carsonson Leasing where they would refurbish, they would fix, they would, and then sell or lease these different vehicles, whether it's a snow plow or a semi-truck or whatever it is that they do. Anyway, so they have the two lots that would be, that would kind of flank Steiner, so they're, it's kind of almost a V shape. It's two lots that come together. So they are working on their plans as well. Hardwood Estates, the EDA did purchase the property, some of you may know it as the Mova Hill property, that is across from St. Ansgar's Church and the school at Highway 19 and the New 24. And we are in the process of working with our engineer and their engineering team to get a concept plan put together that hopefully we'll be able to bring forward in the near future. Gemini, they did add, and this will be kind of a little overlap with something Diane has too, but Gemini, they did add a new building to expand their operations, and that value was $3 million. And then Allied Valve also has secured a permit to expand their operations, and that expansion is valued at $660,000. Business subsidies, I'm just going to show you the, the different loans that we've got out right now for our revolving loan fund would be Rob Bistro, Keith Myers to refurbish the former Schofield Drug Building, Tillian Brewing Art Org, and then Magnolia Animal Hospital on the south end of town. So, so outstanding balances, $301,000. And then our current balance, well, I shouldn't say our current balance, but our year-end balance was $112,536. These are just a few properties, and I want to point out that these two lots here in the industrial park are actually owned by the city, so they are not owned by the EDA. These were land, these were two parcels that were under a contract with a former business owner that once that, once he sold that property to the south, those lots then became available again. So, so those are actually, like I said, they're open for development, but the city, the city council actually owns them. So the, this would be one of the parcels here that Carsonson Leasing is under option, and then also this 2.9. So you can see that back when, this one currently is kind of a tough one. You know, there's no access or access without going between those two properties, so it's nice that they were interested in both of those. That is the option that Rob Bistro has on the 4.3 acres. And then, of course, we've got the formerly Chevrolet that's serving as parking right now. And then this would be our newly acquired property for Hardwood Estates, and that's just a little over 40 acres. So, real estate transactions, again, selling the Cannon Ball, that was, that was a great turnaround on that property, the color, or the Hardwood Estates. And then the other one that was really kind of a fun, interesting project was the, it was 300 East Minnesota Street was in tax forfeiture, and the county asked if we would be interested in acquiring it, if the EDA would, if we were to pass it on to some type of nonprofit entity to develop the property. So we talked with the Housing Initiative that builds the schoolhouses, so you, I know you're most likely familiar with the school construction house. So the Housing Initiative is the one that holds and funds that project. So the EDA acquired it and basically in the same day then passed it on to the Housing Initiative, and they'll be breaking ground this fall. So the cost of the lot was basically, they just had to purchase, or they had to pay for all of the demo and cleanup and title transfer and everything like that. So it was really a win-win for everyone, actually, because they, there weren't any lots available for them to build a house in the fall otherwise. Marketing efforts, again, if you ever want to go through, marketing's my favorite subject, of course, so if you ever want to go through any of the different things, different platforms that we've got, I'm more than happy to speak too much about it. So, but these are some really great, three great photos that I just love using in any of our marketing efforts. The Cannon Roots Local Foods Initiative continues to be a big deal tomorrow, or on Thursday this week, Cannon Falls is hosting for the second time the buyer, the buyer vendor event. Last year, we had just under 30 vendors, I think, and only a handful of buyers, and this year we are, what do we have, 50-some vendors, and there's like 30-some buyers, and overall, there will probably be about 200 and some people that we're bringing into Cannon Falls for this particular event. So it's small local food producers such as, well, I mean, Ferndale's not so small anymore, but you know, you think of Cannon Bells, or you think of Rob Bistro, or you know, any of these kind of homegrown local food producers, and partnering them with Costco, partnering them with Ronmar, partnering them with some of these larger, you know, Kowalskis, you know, some larger wholesalers or retailers, I should say, and them being able to make a deal with them. So it's pretty exciting. This event is usually held down in Rochester, and last year, we were able to kind of lure them here. They had a great experience, and like I said, they've doubled their amount of participants. So, and then I'll also be taking people that are interested that day on a tour of our local food producers, so I get to kind of play tour guide on Thursday. So the local feast, I'll just kind of click through here again. Local Feast is the feast event that's in Rochester. We do a two-page advertorial. We've got the Cannon Roots website that features the different food, food and beverage producers, partnering that with our activities. You can take part in Cannon Falls on the river, at the lake, on the trails. And then also, we've got the Facebook page, Instagram, and then the Sherpa page is kind of like a TripAdvisor where people can post their adventure that they've had in Cannon Falls. So on the left, you'll see the flavors of the fall. So this is that two-page advertorial that we had in the Feast magazine, and we had three Cover Girls known as the Cannon Bells that were actually the, the feature story in last year's magazine article. So that was pretty exciting, and it's the ninth annual event that was held in Rochester, and that's a public-facing event. The one that's in town on Thursday is really just for vendors and buyers, so it's not a public event. But yeah, we're pretty proud of our girls, and they've got an amazing story and continue to just have as much enthusiasm as we could absolutely hope for. So again, this is just, I already kind of talked about the trade show, so I won't read all the quotes because you had that in your packet. But again, it was, it's a really great opportunity for Cannon Falls, and our hotels will benefit from that. Mayor, I believe that there's a kind of a ad hoc, like, post-reception, some people are going to try, some of the vendors are going to try to get together after the event. So again, it's people getting to experience Cannon Falls, and you, and like I said, benefiting our lodging facilities as well. We participated in the, on the right, there's the Discover Cannon Falls ad that the EDA had paid for. And then I won't necessarily play this if we want to keep on track, but on the road, so 97.5 is a station down in Rochester, and Julie Jones has the morning show. And this all started back in, during the, during the pandemic when people were kind of doing staycations. I know that buzzword's kind of overdone, but they were trying to encourage people to get out and still patronize your local businesses and everything, since you couldn't go off to Disney World or wherever it was. So anyway, they featured small communities around the area, and even after things opened back up, they selected Cannon Falls. It was a free PR event for us, and they did, I don't know, did any of you click the video in your presentation to watch the video or not? Do you want me to take two minutes to show you that, or do you not want me to? I don't have to. It's up to you. What? Oh, okay. Okay. So I'm, oh dear. We'll see if it plays with sound.
On the road with Minnesota 97.5 and KNS Heating and Air.
This week, Cannon Falls, uniquely named and strategically placed between Rochester and the Twin Cities. First stop, Cannon Bell's Ice Cream and Cheese Shop, featuring over 30 flavors of ice cream. And their cheese is also featured in Hy-Vee on Circle Drive in Rochester with great flavors. Order online at cannonbells.com. Second stop, Cannon Valley Specialties. You'll find a gift for everyone with hilarious greeting cards, baby gifts, hats, shirts, sweatshirts, and so much more. To find out more, visit cannonvalleyspecialties.myshopify.com. Last stop, the Mill Street Tavern, where the locals go. A charming local hideaway with a large patio and a beautiful banquet space. Plenty of Minnesota local beers on tap and specialty cocktails like the Blueberry Martini with specialties like layer nachos and Baja Fish tacos made with salmon. To learn more, visit millstreettavern.com.
On the road with Minnesota 97.5 is brought to you by KNS Heating and Air. One call does it all. Heating, cooling, plumbing, and electrical.
So that was, again, that was a free PR opportunity for Cannon Falls, and let me get back to my presentation so you don't have to look at my emails. And the, what was I going to say? So then what she did is that during her morning show, she talked about her, she kind of like put in little plugs for Cannon Falls, like, oh, and then when I was in Cannon Falls, this is what we did, and oh, they have the greatest little winery, and oh, they have the wonderful whatever. So she kind of worked in her half, half of a day with her entourage that she brought. And then, you know, we were able to talk, she sat down with each of the business owners and kind of talked to them about, you know, why did they start their business here, what are some benefits, what are things to attract people to Cannon Falls? So it was really a great, great afternoon with them, too. Again, these are just a couple more ads that we participated either with the Chamber or the EDA had paid for. Most of them were a co-op with the Chamber, the trail, and ourselves. And then the other one on the right is a poster that I've got at different retailers, different restaurants and whatnot around town, where if you scan the QR code, it will take you to the different adventures that you can have in Cannon Falls. So if you haven't done that, I encourage you to do that because it's kind of a fun little thing, and you can create your own video and add more content if you'd like. Then it doesn't cost us anything. Again, this is just highlighting our local producers. Again, it's pretty impressive for a town of 4,200 people, so hopefully we can continue to add and grow that. I do use our local foods producers as a way to attract other businesses. I've had conversations with a few other, a few other businesses, you know, that are either looking to relocate or expand or whatnot. So this is a really great tool, knowing that they could be part of this network, part of this cluster development. It's really, you can't, you can't buy this kind of thing. I mean, this is really very unique to Cannon Falls. We've got the Community TV channel, and then also the Facebook page, so we have a lot of traction on that. Social media, I won't necessarily bore you, but we did, we continue to increase our followers for our City of Cannon Falls page. And then these were just some of our goals. So I like when I can cross things off a list. I don't know how you feel about that, but I feel very satisfied when that happens. So we had, we had a goal of acquiring and purchasing property for development, creating a housing committee, which we did. And then the other ones was business retention, was meeting with businesses to promote our revolving loan fund and build relationships. So I mean, I'm out and about pretty often, talking with business owners, asking what it is that I can do to help them. And then the other is selling the lot in the industrial park that was, has a TIF district established. It's not certified yet, but that would be one of the properties that Carsonson is acquiring. So those were, like I said, it's good when you can cross things off a list, right? And I'll turn it over to Diane. Or I should ask, do you have any questions or anything? I know I kind of whipped through it quickly. Diane, yes?
Rob Bistro's is developing, will they be leaving their current site, or is this an addition to that?
No, this would be moving all operations out to that new, that new location if that moves forward. Because I believe that their current space is, I don't know, is it 10,000 or 11,000? They would be, they would be double, if not two and a half size, out in the industrial park. So, any other questions? in the industrial park. So, any other questions? Okay, I will be quiet, and I'll let Diane speak, but I'll advance her slides.
All right. First, I'm going to introduce you to the new members of our planning, planning commission this year for 2023. We do have the 2022 ones up on the board. This year, we have Steve Gesmi, he is our chair, Diane Johnson, Bruce Hemmer, Jay Benkin, who is new, and Ryan Jepson, who is our alternate. Thank you to all of you guys for serving. You guys do a wonderful job, and you're the best in the business. Let's go through what our processes were that we completed in 2022. The first was a variance. I'm just going to whip through these kind of quickly, not bore you guys with the details too much. We had one variance for Randy Retzickel. It was for a setback. We had six CUPs granted in 2022. One was for Randy Retzickel. That was to allow the new cold storage warehousing that he has in the B2. The second one is for Cal's Motor Group, allowing outdoor sales lots, as well as outdoor automobile sales in the B2. Doug Geisbers and Rick Knowlton were three and four. They both wanted to conduct grading work in the bluff protection overlay district this summer. Number five was Stalin Holdings. That was to allow the warehousing. That was that new building that Laura just referred to for $660,000 in the B2. And the last one was for Peter Bodett, to allow construction of a drive-through addition to Subway. We had one administrative subdivision for Robert and Marlene Banks. That was a lot split. We did finish up an annexation for Josie and Aaron Smith, Greensmith Builders. That would be on the north side of town. We had one final plat. That was for the Keller Bartman Apartments. We had two rezones. One was for the Keller Bartman Apartments. The second one was for Matt Fimmern. He purchased one of the bank's properties on the south side of town. We had two administrative permits. One was to allow a change of ownership from, for a garage and carport from apartment four to apartment one. And one was for Tilly and Brewing Company for outdoor service on a detached outside deck, which is wonderful in the summertime. We had three ordinance amendments. One was a zoning ordinance amendment, and two were licensing ordinance amendments. We had business activity, like Laura mentioned. These were building permits. One was for Gemini at $3,050,000, and one was for Allied Bell for $660,000. The biggest story of the year was probably building permits in the hailstorm, to be honest with you. Before we touch on those, I will mention that we did have seven new homes, which is pretty incredible, considering that lots that we have left over are challenging at best. We had some really creative builders who stuck them in in places where no one else dared go, and bless their hearts. I mean, it was $1,662,000. We had 1,143 building permits this year. To put that in perspective, typically, we have two hundred and some. So it was through the roof. And to give you a valuation, it was $21,913,000, which is huge. The zoning office approved seventy-one permits last year, sixty-seven licenses, and addressed five new properties. And that was pretty much it for 2022. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Item A, just and correct claims, accounting period ending on March sixteenth, 2023. Item B, meeting minutes for March seventh, 2023, city council meeting. C, approve the hire of Thomas Miller to the fire department. D, approve hire of Seth Flodeen to the fire department. E, approve city attorney contract. Item F, approve advertisement of public works director and zoning administrator.
Can you hit the button so the... Thank you.
There we go. Approve the advertisement of public works director and zoning administrator positions. G, approve Cannon Valley Trail fundraising. And H, accept police officer resignations and approval to fill positions. Are there any items that the council would like to pull down into council business?
Would you item E?
Item E, city attorney contract. We will pull that down. Should we make that item A?
Can we make it after item A?
Yep, we'll make it B.
Okay.
Is there anything else that the council would like to have pulled down? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Kerry's. All right. Council business, item A, city attorney attendance. Neil, would you like to take this one? Or council, we all received the information in our packet. Sure.
At the last meeting, it was discussed that we should get an opinion on a, on the city attorney attendance. In my research, it was found that back in 2017, this item was discussed by the city council and brought before the city attorney. In your package, you'll find the minutes from that meeting. You'll find the memo from the city administrator and the opinion from Campbell Knutson, the attorney at the time, in which it says that the city attorney does not have to be present at the, at the meetings. He gives some court cases. Mr. Knutson pretty much says that it's informational, it's directory, and strict compliance is not required.
Any discussion from the council? All right. No action required on that tonight. Moving on to item B, which Derek wanted to pull down.
Yeah, I just pulled it down. I wanted to have it after that last thing, because the first thing it says on here is attendance at all city council meetings, attendance at other meetings as requested. Should we remove that first sentence and just have it say something like attendance at meetings as requested? Is that something we, that would make sense?
Seems like it would make more sense.
Okay.
What does the council think?
I agree.
Change the wording of that bullet item to...
Just take out all.
Yep. Attend meetings as requested or required.
I like it.
Sure. Okay. Well, I will make a motion that we approve the contract with that substitution of that first line.
Second.
I got a motion from Lundell, a second from Gesmi. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's. Moving on to item C, the police retention and recruiting. Chief McCormick, if you would like to have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what you have before you is a memorandum of understanding. For those who have been on council for a little while, a very similar memo was brought about two years ago, when we lost Officer Good and Officer Larson and Officer Rambolt in a short timeframe. We utilized one of our part-time officers in a full-time capacity. This time, right now, we're down four officers. And so we want to utilize two of our part-time officers in a full-time capacity. This was discussed at our police commission meeting. And then the other thing that was discussed was, candidly, we can't afford to lose anybody else. We're already at a crisis. That would be at a catastrophe. And I'm stuck within the terms of the contract. But what I proposed to the police commission was that we make adjustments within steps to let the current employees know that they are valuable to us. We want to retain them. And that we consider hiring officers at a starting wage, and then after six months, moving them up, two steps, again, to let them know they're valuable to us and that we want to retain them. And so what you see before you is a memorandum to do just that. It has been reviewed by our city attorney, and she had some tweaks to it. We made those changes. It was then reviewed by the Law Enforcement Labor Services, which is the union representing the officers. They did not have any changes. They were fine with the agreement or memorandum of understanding as written. And so now it's in front of this body for consideration and approval.
So in essence, what you're doing is you're speeding up the steps?
Yes.
Pretty much in layman's terms?
Yep. Yep. I, you know, and during our work session, I talked about the crisis facing this industry. And I think we're going to need to take a overall look. And it's not just within mine. You know, you heard it from, you know, Chief Melchel as well. But those are things that I can't control. What I can control is trying to work within the existing terms. And that's, so that's what you see before you.
Any questions for Chief?
How many full-time officers do we actually have now?
As of today?
Yeah.
Three. As of tomorrow, two. As of a week from tomorrow, one. So this is going to put in place the backfill for the temporary full-time. I take that back. We do have one more. We just hired him on the, on the twentieth. We finished the training required for post today, so that we could issue him sidearm and powers of arrest under the terms of his license. But he's still got to go through training. So we don't know where that's going to be yet. It could be anywhere from twelve to eighteen weeks before he would be out on his own.
Best of luck.
Is it possible when we hire on a new officer?
Big girl voice.
Big girl voice again. All right. Is it possible when we hire on a new officer? Can we sign an employment contract with them? Because like our last cap, not the most recent hire, but the one before, hired on in August, already leaving. That's expensive for the city. That's hard.
It's very expensive, but I do not know if that is something that would be achievable. It would most likely be subject to collective bargaining terms, because they're not individuals. We bargain with a unit.
The unit, okay. I just thought, like, if we could even keep someone for two years, you know, at least it would be more worth.
Yep, but we want to keep them longer than that. And I think, you know, the reality is, is, you know, I mean, you're seeing it not just in the police environment. You're seeing it across the board. In the police environment, we're hiring away from each other. We can only do that for so long, right? There's cities that are offering hiring bonuses to attract experienced officers. And the officers are going to go. And if there's another city offering a bigger bonus, they're going to go there, too. You know, it's kind of, you know, one of those things where the final outcome, I don't think is going to be good for our profession. We, we need people within our communities, not just Cannon Falls, as an industry, that know our communities, that know our residents, can police to our communities. We don't need people that are just job hunting for the latest and greatest paycheck and bonus that's going to come along. But I think we're going to have to be competitive in our wages. And I don't think we are right now.
Just to add a little bit, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't, we can't rely on the county for help at this point either, because this, as you said, this is not just affecting community, this is affecting our Goodhue County as well.
In fact, we had a, an officer from our department and an officer from Sembroda one night over this weekend that met halfway because of an accident that occurred out there. And the county had one person on who was busy, and the state patrol didn't have anybody in the area. So it's not something that we're, we're experiencing just as one community. It's affecting the industry wide. The sheriff's department is down. They've got people in training. But the training for them takes just as long as it does for
Any other questions from the council or discussion?
Having heard you many times now, help us understand just what kind of crisis law enforcement overall is facing in terms of recruitment. Is there any way we could leverage more, like, part-time people that might be a part of our community looking for, I don't want to call it a side job, because it's really not, but...
Well, realistically, it almost has to be. So Minnesota did away with part-time licenses half a dozen years or more ago. So right now, the only way we can get somebody part-time is somebody who possesses a full-time peace officer license. So that means they are either licensed eligible somewhere, have already an existing job, or have retired and are, you know, interested in, or left the industry and are interested in coming back into it. So, you know, right now, we're very fortunate in that two of our part-time officers are willing to make the commitment to full-time status. There are agencies that don't. We are hiring our newest officer. He was working part-time somewhere, and he had commitments to that agency for the next couple of weeks, and we're going to honor those rather than telling him tough, because once he leaves, that means that agency's chief doesn't get days off. It's, you know, a one-horse town, so to speak. And this part-time officer allows him to have days off. So we're going to flex our schedule around that a little bit in our training, because in all good consciousness, I couldn't just tell him tough. I don't think it's the right thing for due to our industry. I think we're hurting ourselves. So this goes back, realistically, goes back to, you know, George Floyd. Not necessarily that incident, but what was occurring within our industry around that time. And so you had a lot of college students who were in the law enforcement program that just said, yep, I'm going to go do something different. Minnesota law enforcement programs used to, you know, each of our major colleges would churn out probably about sixty to seventy students or more. Winona State, not, I don't know what their graduation this year is, but their graduation last year was like seven or eight from their program.
Wow.
And all seven already had jobs before they graduated in other states, because they came up and recruited them away. I don't expect that's going to last. I think we're going to see, is anything the market's going to bear out? You know, new, people are going to start thinking about this as a profession as wages rise. You know, this isn't something to get in and do for just two years. You know, this is something to get in and do for a career. I've been doing it for thirty-plus years. And as I said, you know, it's, I think, you know, Tim, or, excuse me, Chief Melchel, mentioned it very well. We're not doing it for the recognition. Yep, it feels great when somebody tells us, great job, we really appreciate you. We're doing it because we help people. We want to help people. And there are people out there that are thinking of this as a career. It's just that the process is going to take us two to four years to move them through the college system, into the market to be able to start filling those jobs. And in the meantime, I don't know what the total was today. I didn't look. Last week, it was a hundred and, I think, a hundred and sixty-something agencies looking for officers. Minneapolis-St. Paul, State Patrol, Rochester, and Duluth, as a unit, are probably looking for more people than there are available. And so it's going to be challenging times, not just for us, but for all cities, all sheriff's offices for the next, I'm anticipating four years where we're going to go through this cycle where we're just feeding amongst ourselves, and it's going to kill us in some ways. And then I think we're in for another couple of years where we start to get those bodies coming in. But we're definitely six to more years out from when we get back to more of a normal market. We used to get, as an example, we'd post a position when I came here. We would get over probably forty-five candidates. This last time, we managed to reach nine, and it took us two months. And it's just challenging. So, and by the way, those forty-five would have been just in two weeks. So.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Police Chief McCormick? Discussion from the council regarding the MOU that sits before us. I would take a motion to approve the police retention and recruiting memorandum of understanding.
So moved.
I got a motion by Lundell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's. That brings us to reports, department heads. Start with Danny.
Well, we're starting to transition into street sweeping, pothole, hydrant flushing season. We don't have firm... season. We don't have firm dates on hydrant flushing yet, because there's still quite a bit of snow. So tree trimming going on right now, too. So we're in that transition phase. And I just want to add to what Jeff said. I was at a water conference in Rochester last week, just water operators, and a couple of water operators got up and spoke about staffing. And right now, our, the water department's retiring out about 200 operators a year, and there's about 5,000 or 6,000 of us. And the school in St. Cloud had seven students last year, and Ely had two. So that math doesn't quite work out. So encourage the youngsters to look into public works. It's not a bad job.
Diane, anything you'd like to add?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. Laura?
I just want to reiterate the feast event that's coming to Cannon on Thursday. And then Maggie Wilson from the Chamber asked me to just relay some information. She wasn't able to be here this evening. But the Chamber did move into Nelson Insurance Office above the bakery temporarily till the end of April, because that building is being sold to a local business owner that will be expanding her business and moving to the corner. And then once she's out of that space, then the Chamber will relocate into her existing space. The Easter hunt is Saturday, April 8, at 10:00 a.m., and families and kids can meet at the city parking lot. And you'll get your number that you can then go start hunting around town for. There's 19 businesses currently that are participating in that. And if you, if anyone in the community, or if the business people or U.S. council would like to help bag the candy that the kids go and find, you could reach out to Maggie at the Chamber. The email is still the same. It's tourism@cannonfalls.org. Let's see, the Veterans Memorial, they will be having a, kind of a Phase One grand opening, and that's coming up May 14. And Fun Fest will be June 1. The golf tournament, mark your calendars, is June 19, so get your foursome together. And then the Cannon Cruise will be August 4. So those are just kind of, that's just kind of a snapshot of what's coming up with Chamber events in the next few months. So otherwise, that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah. Speaking of transitioning, believe it or not, we've transitioned to spring. At the end of this month, our winter parking restrictions will end. However, if it's like last year, the snow will not have ended. So, you know, please be mindful. We won't be ticketing and towing, but help public works when we do get those events, because they tend to be wet, heavy snow. And if you can get your vehicles off the roadway, it makes it a lot easier for them to get the, the streets cleared. That's all I have.
Great. Sarah, anything? Neil?
Just with the two resignations tonight of the directors, zoning administrator, and Dan's job, the public works director, it's going to get kind of busy around City Hall. We'll try our best to keep up until we get some replacements, but we'll see how it goes. Just kind of an FYI.
Okay. Library Board, met on March 13. Who would like to...
I wasn't there.
Okay.
But Nicole asked me to touch on the anniversary this weekend for the library in their building. Raffle, raffling, they have gifts. They're having a band. It's kind of going to be a big to-do. So they want everyone to go check it out. The band is playing from 10:30 till 12:30, and I think the, the final drawing is at 1:30. So get there while it's hot.
Cool.
That's all I got.
All right. Finance Committee, I believe most of the issues that we dealt with were all included in the agenda here tonight. We'll have to meet, we're going to meet with the townships at the next meeting, and... Yep, they've been invited.
We also talked about some land acquisition for our project.
Police Commission, it seems like, if you'd like to add?
Yeah, we covered basically everything during some part of this, this meeting. Our newest officers were approved by council. Officer Jacobson was considered and recommended and approved by Police Commission. We then had a discussion regarding the retention, recruitment, and hiring for new officers to try to get the department back up to where they were. And you saw some of that action coming forward. We are currently taking applications for the ones that you accepted the resignations on tonight, and we'll be moving forward with that process in the coming week or so.
All right. Council, we'll start with you, Laura. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Lisa?
I do not.
Ryan?
Not tonight.
Derek? Diane?
I know this is not your last meeting with us, correct?
Right.
One more, but I, I mean, I still have to say my appreciation for the incredible service both Diane and Dan have given to our town in a number of years. And I know you're going home to family, and it's a long time coming, but we will miss you.
Steve, anything you'd like to add?
I don't have anything.
We've got one more meeting, so I'll save it for that last one. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Lundell, second from Johnson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.